Westford Planning Board, as always, this meeting is probably broadcast or could be rebroadcast on Westford Cat. Today we have with us Jeffrey Morsett, Assistant Town Engineer, Joe Jidowitz, Town Planner, and our Town Engineer Paul Sterrett. As always, we'll start with open forum. Anybody in? Bob?
Yeah, I do. People, some people may have seen on some of the public forums, there's been some negative comments about the impacts of MBTA community housing in this community. And I want to set the record straight. These comments have been with respect to capital funding for infrastructure improvements. When the committee dealt with MBTA community housing and when we, the planning board, did it during the public hearing process, we made it very clear. The intent is that any project that comes forward and requires an improvement in the infrastructure, let's say, an additional well for our public water system, that those costs should be determined, we will listen to them, and those costs will be passed on to the project developers. They are not to be passed on to the rate-takers or the taxpayers in this community. I want to make that very clear. And I've asked, I've already spoken with Jeff and Joe to make sure we get this message clearly out to our own departments in town, as well as to the townspeople, and as well as to FinCom, the Select Board, and everybody else in this crazy financial budget season as we go through with the budget. We do expect that capital costs and all these costs will be determined. We expect to hear what they are, but we do not expect to pass them on to this community. And that's all costs. If there's a cost associated just with running through the permitting process, I don't expect the town to put money for grants and other associated costs. I expect that money to be determined, to come to us, and we will pass it on to the project itself. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody else at the board for open forum?
No, thank you.
Nope. Staff? Anybody in the audience? All right, looks like our first public hearing item is TB 2, oh, we're missing Dylan tonight, so it'll be four of us. The first item was TB 2425, 50 Main Street Fletcher Library. Looks like it's been about two and a half, three months since we've seen him, but come on up, let's see what's going on.
Hi, I'm Ellen Rainville, the library director, and we have a couple of library trustees here from the elected Board of Library Trustees and members of the Permanent Town Building Committee. As well, we have our OPM Alicia Monk from CHA Consulting, and we have Leah Wilkovich-Cordy from Feingold Alexander Architects and representatives from Horstley Witten as well. So we're back with you to review the site plan, having worked with the engineering and the planning department. And we have a brief slide deck to show you, and I'll let Leah take that away.
Thank you, Ellen, and thank you, everyone. Yes, thank you for welcoming us back. As Ellen mentioned, we have representatives here from Feingold Alexander, Horstley Witten, Civil and Verdant Landscape Architects. The purpose of us coming before you again tonight is to respond to some of the comments we heard the last time that we were here, as well as ongoing conversations with the Town Engineering Department. So, next slide, introductions. So, here's who we have. You'll be hearing from myself, Katia, and Jonas tonight as we click through the slides. Thanks, Joe. So, first is a quick introduction of the tree covenant. That was a question the last time that we were here. This is an image of the 1987 deed and the portion of the land that it affects. So, the existing library is to the right here, and as you can see, the buffer itself is really only in that back right-hand corner, yeah, in the aqua and the red outline. So, that is the conditions as they exist today, what is impacted. As you can see, very few trees actually do land in that buffer, but if you go to the next slide, Joe, we have some enlarged images of the trees that are going to be removed as part of the proposed project. There are two that fully land within this buffer, but there are a few on the outskirts. And then, in response to that covenant, what we are proposing to do is try to follow it as closely as we can. Originally, it wasn't even implemented per the language of the original deed. It was a single row of pine trees that was planted instead of-
Sorry, can you speak up a little bit?
Um, absolutely. So, it was originally a single row of pine trees that was planted because that was agreed to by the neighbor of the time. So, that's what's shown here in the existing conditions is that single row, but in order to follow the covenant, the deed from 1987, what we are proposing to do, if you go to the next slide, Joe, is to actually put that second row of pine trees in a zigzag pattern within that buffer. So, we are restoring that double row that was agreed to as part of that 1987 deed. So, that is the first portion of our screening conversation. And the other item of concern that had come up the last time we were here in October was additional screening from the immediate neighbor. So, if you go to the next slide, Joe, and this is a conversation that is ongoing, there is a committee that has been formed that is working through negotiations with the neighbor. It's a conversation that's continuing, but we, our team- Thank you, Verdant, for the beautiful image- -is pretty telling what the existing conditions are on the top there with the taller pine trees along the driveway, which we've also had reviewed by an arborist, and he confirmed our-
Excuse me, I'm getting signals from the audience, they can't hear you. Can you try to speak up a little bit?
Sorry, everyone. So, there are some existing pine trees that are along the driveway that are not part of that covenant that we just reviewed, but are established trees that have been there for a long time, but they are not in good condition per a review that we had by a professional arborist, and we do have that report. So, and they're also not providing screening for that neighbor very well anymore, particularly for headlights and traffic that are coming in and out of the driveway. So, the bottom image is showing what the proposed planting would actually do, and while it is not tall, established pine trees, it is actually a denser grouping of plantings that provides some more screening. And with that, I will hand over the landscape discussion to Katia from Verdant.
Might I ask to use the pointer?
I have a separate one if you want.
The orange button?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So, hello, everybody. My name is Katia Passadlo. I'm with Verdant Landscape Architecture. Leah covered that graphic quite nicely. Just to reiterate on the previous slide, the existing condition does not provide a lot of good buffer at the lower levels, the human experience, the first floors of both the proposed library renovations, as well as the abutters' first floor looking towards the library. There's not a lot of buffer there now, but in our proposed condition, there'll be new evergreens planted in a row that will grow together eventually and also eventually get tall and maintain their foliage to the ground. They won't have bare foliage in the lower levels as they age, in the same way that the white pine trees are doing currently. So, we're trying to avoid that from happening again. So, what we've done here, this is our overall plan, and then I have just a few brief slides that look at in more detail each of the zones, along the north, the center, and the south, and then something about the lighting. But what we've highlighted here in red outlines are the areas that show any kind of significant changes that have been made since our last presentation to you last fall in order to respond to your comments, also the town engineer's comments, and the fire department's comments. So, we're going to, just like the civil engineers' plans, which you're going to see shortly, we're focusing on just these changes rather than reiterating the whole presentation again and describing our whole design intent to help limit the length of the presentation. And as you can see, most of the changes are focused on the back half of the property, the left side of the screen behind the library. So, let's start at the top of the page. If you go to the next slide, we're going to zoom into that northern edge again, and along the bottom, you can see the previous iteration of our plan from last fall, and along the top, you can see the proposed condition. With changes to the bio-retention area, which is in that little triangular green space formed right where the driveway ends and becomes a parking area, because of those, there's some changes to that bio-retention shape, so we had to alter the planting around it, essentially. Nothing significant really to share in that regard, except that there were some small changes to plantings there. The most significant change along the north here is what Leah already described, the trees along that northern property line to the left side of these slides. Previously, we had some deciduous trees and some shrubs and some other things, and now we're going to be providing the evergreen trees that the covenant had required. Double row of staggered-aligned white pine trees along that length. White pine trees, just to be clear, are native trees, so we love them. We use them in a lot of planting designs, especially on the outskirts of sites like this, so they're appropriate. They're particularly fast-growing species of evergreen, which is nice, and it's what's required in the covenant, so that's why the choice was made. Next slide, please. Now, we're going to look at the center of the parking area, essentially. These mainly have to do with comments from the town engineer regarding the expansion of the footprint of the infiltration system that the civil engineer will get into in just a minute. As a result of the expansion of the infiltration system below the pavements and the plant beds in the area, kind of to the south half of the parking area, we had to change some plantings. And we had to make, let's see, we had to make sure that, basically, that the root systems of the trees and the shrubs would not impact that drainage system and get in the way of the drainage system and cause some failures of that drainage system potentially. So, you see in the bottom image, we had five large shade trees through the central planting islands around the parking, you know, within the center area of the parking area. And now, we have one large shade tree and two small shade trees, which are to the right end of that, closer to the drop-off. Yes, thank you. I was going to point them out myself, but someone's doing it for me. Thank you. So, we've reduced the tree number a little bit. We've also had to reduce some shrub plantings in that zone so that we don't have any impact of shrub roots interfering with the drainage system. Lastly, we introduced a root barrier, root stop barrier. There are four trees shown on this image. It's actually five total at the drop-off to the right side of the drop-off near the entry, and the tree locations haven't changed. However, there was some concern that there are some drain pipes that cross between them underground, and we're, in order to avoid the tree roots from interfering with the drain pipes ever, it was determined we could add root barrier around the drain pipes to eliminate the potential for those roots to get anywhere near those pipes. So, those details, and I think Jonas will get into more detail about them, those are shown on the civil engineering plans, but we've coordinated that on our plans as well, so it's noted on our plans. Next slide, please. So, lastly, along the southern edge of the parking area, we also made some changes. This included adapting to the new dumpster location. That was a request to, you know, make it easier to remove trash. It got shifted and angled in this fashion, so along the bottom is the previous iteration, and our current plan shows it angled like that. Therefore, we had to make some planting changes just as, you know, related to that, a major change to the parking, the pavements and things. We also reduced, we removed a couple of trees from this zone to eliminate any potential conflict with the infiltration system and pipes that exit out towards the wetland on the left there. And we also reduced the size and species of a couple, several of the trees here so that their roots wouldn't overgrow the space allowed nearby some of those drain pipes that are underground, and shifted them around a little bit to make sure that they were well away from those impacts. Last slide, please. We have also updated the lighting plan, and this is just a sort of like a conceptual image showing where each light is, as if the yellow light is what the light is. It's not really accurate to a real photometric, but just for us to be able to see where each of the lights is located, those yellow shaded areas indicate light locations. Previously, the main changes here have to do with shifting of a pole light here or there to respond to fire department concerns about turning radii through the parking lot, and also to respond to the dumpster relocation. We had to shift a post light a little bit. And lastly, if you go to the next slide, we're going to focus in on the front of the library. On the right-hand side, you see the plan that we shared last fall indicating several smaller bollard lights near the front walkway to the historic facade. We have eliminated these modern-style bollards from the front walkway. Instead, we're including only one single light post that will match, as closely as we can, match the lights that are outside the town hall here to unify the style of light that's visible from the front and make it more historic and in-keeping. I believe that's all I have, but happy to come back to questions on these slides or others, and I'm going to pass it over to Jonas now, because we'll talk about civil engineering.
Thanks, Kat. I am Jonas Proctus, Professional Engineer with Horstley Witten Group. Good to see you all again. I will also just mostly address any of the comments received from you, as well as Fire Department, Conservation, and the Engineering Department. So, this is speaking to some of the changes from the planning board. I'll also use this nice pointer. So, we have identified the snow storage in four different locations, shown in light blue on the plans, and we've also added a note on the plans stating that any excess snow that there is not capacity for in these storage locations will be brought off-site to a town-determined location. We have shifted the angle of the dumpster pad, as Katia mentioned, and so that way, a front loader or a side loader would be able to access the dumpster as needed. We've also revised the building footprint, so we are providing more than the 15-foot setback from the edge of the building corner. And I think the landscape buffer has been spoken to already. Next slide, please, Joe. Regarding the fire department comments, we've run the revised fire truck turning analysis, and per some of the fire department's follow-up comments, we've shifted one of the light posts to avoid any possibility that the sweep from the fire truck ladder would hit the lamp post. And then, from the water department, we've just adjusted how the connection to the street works. So, we've added, we've basically shifted the shut-off valves, and we're only tapping at one location. Next slide, please, Joe. Finally, we've been working closely with the Town Engineering Department. We have revised the stormwater system to have a much larger stormwater chamber system, and that will prevent any stormwater from ponding in the parking lot, even during the 100-year storm event. We are planning to reuse this 10-inch outlet pipe, which is the current outfall and discharges close to the wetlands on the north side of the site. And then, we are proposing one new outfall associated with the stormwater chamber system, as well as an outfall that we don't anticipate will really receive any flow, but it's associated with the foundation drain system, so only in rare occasions would groundwater rise to the point that any sort of low level of outflow would occur there. We've been working closely with the Town Engineering Department. Like I said, we observed a new test pit with them to confirm the subsurface conditions, the soils, and we've also been working to make sure there's enough cover over the pipes. And like Katia spoke to, we've been working really hard to make sure that we will not have any conflicts related to the landscaping and the pipes. That's a point of ongoing coordination, so we anticipate that may continue over the course of the week as we provide those final landscape plans and civil plans to the Engineering Department. But we are providing root barriers in the two remaining locations where we have pipes close to the trees, so that should prevent any root growth over the pipes. And in every other location, we have either revised the trees to be shrubs or otherwise shifted them. I think that is it for engineering.
I guess, lastly, before we turn it over to any questions, the design team and the project would just request that we close the hearing pending any comments or conditions.
You didn't get captured by the microphone.
Oh.
You need to sit in the middle, or, yeah.
So, the project team would just like to request pending any conditions or comments from the planning board that we close the hearing at the end of this discussion.
Okay, great, thank you. Why don't I go to Mr. Sterrett? Do you have comments? I see you had a lengthy comment letter in December 11th.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. Let me say, first of all, that it was, it has been a pleasure to go through these sheets. This project is going to become one of the jewels of the town center. We very clearly put a lot of time and effort, and it's been a joy to go through what my colleagues have put together. We did issue a significant amount of comments, and as Jonas and the team have described, they've been very diligent in responding to those. I'd like to thank the staff at Horstley Witten in particular. They've done a phenomenal job of stepping up. Full disclosure, I did go to the university with Janet, so I know all of her secrets because I have the same ones. And, but they've done an excellent job, and they have addressed, by what I'm hearing tonight, are one of our outstanding comments, and that's the conflict between landscape, in particular, the root systems. All of our utilities live underground, so we are constantly concerned about the long-term maintenance of having to come back sometime later and address infiltration of mature roots as the trees grow, but apparently barriers are going to be used. So, when they address that comment to us, then we should be well and square, squared away. The only other things I'm aware that were outstanding, there was an issue about their septic capacities. They didn't speak to that so far this evening, but I'm hopeful that you'd get some clear resolution on their capacity to handle any Title V septic effluent that will be produced at the library. And then, just as a cautionary tale and comment, having worked on many projects of this size, when you get a project this big and it's being designed by a team of different consultants, there are sheets going back and forth all of the time. We've made comments, they've made revisions, revisions have been revised, and you end up with a lot of layers, because everything is electronic now. So, we do recommend that they issue to us a final stamp set for construction that you will endorse, of course, as a part of the decision process, but I do recommend that we go through that to make sure that everything has been captured as agreed upon and that all of the comments are addressed. It's just one of my tenured experiences, knowing how easy it is for these things to get to a contractor and be in conflict with what you have, what we've agreed to in principle, but never make it onto the mileage sheets. Apart from that, we have already documented our recommendations for conditions, and I don't know that there hasn't been any resistance to those, so we should be in good shape.
So, let me ask, start, again, your letter was, there were quite a few things outstanding on that letter.
Yes.
Most of those have been cleaned up, or you're confident?
Yeah, I'm, we're, is again, these revised sheets, going through them. We did get some material, or later this afternoon, so we haven't looked at that, which is another reason that just getting those final set, that final set that's going to go out to bid, where you do not want to, you don't want the library to become the center of change orders for construction, in which the potential is there, so we think we would be able to capture those things.
Thank you.
And I'm not, and it wasn't clear to me what the team's intentions were for quality control, if they're planning to have the plan set reviewed for the purposes of looking like we did at the highway facility, where, as you recall, we captured millions of dollars in change orders by having it reviewed by a third party. And I don't know if that was ever your intentions to have that done, but-
I'll double-check. We're meeting three times this week.
Sure.
And I think there's one final small piece. There is an outflow pipe, so behind the library lot proper, there is about three acres that were bought, let's see, at the May 7, 1988 annual town meeting. It was actually 2.5 acres, and that is under the care and custody of the Select Board. At the moment, there is a pipe that crosses the boundary, but unfortunately, it's closer to the wetlands, and in this new site plan, the pipe crosses closer to our western side, our church side, and hopefully, it would only carry water during high-storm times. But we have a draft request for an easement for March 22 annual town meeting, so we'll be formally being sure that there's an agreement in place for that. At the moment, there is a pipe that no one ever approved from many, many, many years ago.
Well? Okay. The simple question is, I think you addressed the new lighting fixtures. I did ask last time whether you were going to go before the Historical Commission.
January 22.
Thank you.
Yes, so January 22, we go back in front of the Historic Commission, and we have several things on that agenda.
Okay. With respect to the drainage outfall, which is going close to the wetlands, I'm assuming this has been or is under review with the Conservation Commission?
We see them Wednesday night.
Okay. I guess my question's along that, and hopefully, they'll address that, is the drainage that's going off-site, especially from the parking lot, could potentially contain salts and other contaminants. What's being done with respect to that? Is there going to be limitations on the use of salt?
All outflow to the wetlands, all of the flows, the outfalls, it goes through these treatment systems, the bio-retention system and the subsurface system, and that will remove, you know, the required level of pollutants from the stormwater effluent before any sort of discharge occurs.
Okay.
So, we anticipate that's where most of it will go, and we'll also have a salting plan that's already been, that's part of the stormwater report and part of the general site maintenance plan.
Okay. Getting to maybe the more complicated issue of the snow, because you did show typical snow storage areas, but I think there's still areas on that plan, I think it was whatever that sheet was, C4. Thinking about the areas where you don't want to put snow is also important, because it won't be treated, you potentially could be taking salts and contaminants off the lot, and so I think we're going to want to know where those areas are and probably have a few signs that indicate to the plow operators where snow should not be placed beyond. It's pretty clear on the prints, you know, in terms of when you demarcate the wetlands. Unfortunately, if I was a snow plow operator, I think the places that are most typical for you to put the snow are the back of the property, and that's just where you don't want to put the snow. So, I think it's going to be important to delineate and demarcate where those areas are. As shown here, I mean, you say typical snow storage areas. What's the capacity of the snow storage on the site? I mean, if you had three inches of snow and you removed it from all of the parking and roadway, would you have capacity to store that snow?
We haven't done calculations in terms of the-
Yes, that's something I'd like to see, because I think, looking at the amount of paved area, and there really is very little snow storage area on here.
Right.
I'm just afraid of what the enticement is to put it in the areas where you don't want to put it. So, I think it would be useful for us to have that discussion around what is the capacity of the site, because I suspect three inches would be stressing it because of the large surface area.
Mr. Chair, if I could, for clarification, it's my understanding that we, after a storm, will remove snow, so there's two activities with snow and ice, the snow plowing, you just get it out of the way, but we will come back after, you know, a day or so after events. Do we do that up at the, at the library? I know we do it here.
We do it if we lose enough parking- We do it if we lose enough parking spots.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. So when we had 110 inches of snow that year, we were, we have snow farms and we're, when the crews are done plowing, when the event's over, we send crews back and they do remove snow, which is a second operation.
Yeah, and I'm thinking along those lines, Paul. Just want to know, we want to see the plan of where you're going to put the snow temporarily. As I say, the obvious place is to put it at the back of the property and I think that is the place you don't want to put it. You're going to have to put it on one of the sides so it's not impacting the drainage into the wetlands. So I think that kind of a plan is important to get recorded.
And I will say, and I've explained to the planning board in the past, and we have snow plow operators in the room, they will, I can tell you at three o'clock in the morning after 24 hours of being behind the plow, that snow's going wherever they want. That's just the reality of it. You know, we can address things after the fact, but you know, the best laid plans, so just don't count at three o'clock in the morning.
It sounds like right now excess snow is currently stored in the existing parking area. And that, even with the proposed situation, if that were to continue, that is something that would be captured by the proposed stormwater management system, correct?
Those are.
So it either gets removed or it eventually goes through the system and gets treated before there's any discharge. But if it's excessive, it needs to get taken off-site just as it is now.
Unfortunately, the typical snow storage areas are off of the paved surface, probably outside of the drainage capture area. They're on what appear to be grass or wooded areas. So that's my, that's the only reason I'm asking.
No, I understand, but if it exceeds that limited capacity, then they're going to go right to the current procedure, most likely of storing it in the paved parking areas and they'll lose capacity temporarily until they remove that.
So that's it. Okay, great. Joni?
Okay. Obviously, my biggest concern was making sure that engineering's comments were captured and most of my notes were around those comments. So if Mr. Starrett is fine, I am very happy with the engineering side. I do have two little questions, kind of knit things, but one of the items is these paved flumes. And it says that the designer has stated that the library staff will be responsible for properly maintaining the paved flumes to prevent clogging. So my question is, does the library really have maintenance people on staff that are going to go out there and clear the paved flumes?
We have one full-time maintenance person and we have a frozen 12-hour a week nighttime maintenance person. And because we are seeing a 50% increase in square footage for the library and under the new stretch code and plumbing code, quite a few more restrooms, we will need additional maintenance staff. But yes, we currently, we have both the help of the highway and public works department to plow, we have grounds care from public works, and then we have our own maintenance staff doing snow blowing and shoveling and, you know, roof snow removal, so we do have staff for that.
Okay, so you're comfortable that you'll have people?
Sometimes it's the library director.
I can imagine, you know.
Mr. Chair, if I could, for clarification, can you remind me, was that, these aren't porous pavers? These are, when you say flumes, you're talking about the?
To the bio.
Oh, okay. So you don't need a vacuum truck?
Didn't want for us, I remember that.
Right, no, no, we don't have, we don't have a vacuum truck and I don't see one in our future, so.
Okay, and then the one other little comment was, in terms of parking for events, there was a reference to a 2011 parking plan, which obviously, you know, quite a bit of time has expired or has lapsed. So does the library still have an agreement with the First Parish for parking?
So the memorandum of agreement with First Parish is still in operation. The 2011 plan approved by the select board is still in our emergency manual. And the NIMCOG plan for 267 parking spots around the common is still something we refer to. And we are part of those agencies, nonprofits and organizations around the common. Every time the select board is allowing use of the common, we all are pulled to be sure that we don't have conflicting events occurring. And that's really an issue about parking. So we all have a mutual assistance parking situation around the common.
Okay, good. And I'm fine with that, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I have the same concern about parking. And it does look like the parking is kind of delineated in the emergency management plan, but with the expansion of the library, with the same number of parking spaces essentially, if that parking plan could be more available to folks, it could even available in the library or something like that, because, you know, there's, to your point, there's parking spaces along the road, there's parking spaces across the street in the park, in the church. But for someone to not know until they go into the emergency manual, you know, to find those, it would be nice if it was published.
Absolutely. We have a meeting room policy approved by the Board of Library Trustees and a meeting room reservation system. So we will have more conference rooms. And so any time that we have that meeting room reservation signed off and returned to our management staff, we could make the third page of that, the parking around the common map, and then people would understand where to direct, you know, especially if Boston Road is closed and the library is a construction site, it's going to be tense for a couple of years. So, but we absolutely can do that as a courtesy. We have the information and we already have a process in place to confirm and email with every meeting room user. So that would tell them where they can advise their group users to go.
That's great. Now, even on the website, I'm assuming it's parking is?
We could put it on our website, too.
Yeah. All right, good. And then, obviously, thanks for all the work with the engineering on the drainage and other issues, too. So other than that, no other comments?
All right, great. I will go to the audience. Please state your name, address and your question.
Nice and loud so everyone can hear.
My name is Andrew Remick. I live at 54 Main Street. I am the abutter. And I'd just like to start by saying that since our last meeting, me and my wife have tried our best to be open with communication and collaboration. And I've got to say, I'm more than a little disappointed. We've gotten very little back since October. I think the only email was an email saying that they needed to form a subcommittee to address it. And I was assuming they're maybe a little behind plans, so to see such a refined proposal that they've made no effort to keep us on the loop, I'm more than a little disappointed. I would also like to say that I disagree with their reading of the covenant, that it only applies to the back half and not the front half. Particularly, if you look at the land as it is now, it looks like a very deliberate 10-foot border from the street all the way to the back of the lot. And there's a very consistent spacing of white pine trees. It looks like that's very much was built to satisfy the covenant. And if you consider the fact that that parking lot only exists on land gifted within that covenant, the fact that the driveway itself would not be covered seems a little suspect. Additionally, from a report from the town arborist, assuming the covenant does not apply on that land, they detail how the years of adjacency to the heat from the library driveway and the salt overflow from that driveway is what has killed those white pines that are about five feet from the driveway. And they are now proposing of putting that driveway within five feet of my land and putting that salt and heat damage onto my land and my trees. And I do not think that is acceptable. Additionally, I've got plenty more here. That tree screening, beyond that, they don't seem to be motivated in keeping it, but that same arborist report posed very clear hazards. And I'm surprised that they've been sitting on this report since October and it does not seem like they've been making attempts to address it. Quoting their arborist's report, "The last tree in the row has a large top section that is already completely dead, causing immediate risk and potential damage. These trees are extremely unstable and not safe and will very quickly become unpredictable in so many ways." This report is dated October 24th. It's January, snowstorms are coming. I'd rather not see what happens when there's snow on those branches. I don't think those trees necessarily need to get cut down. I don't know what needs to happen, but I'd really rather see those trees be trimmed. I'd like to see some level of open communication from our neighbor, something, but I'm disappointed with what we're getting.
We do apologize to our neighbors, the Remicks, because we received one late December formal report from town council. You're correct. We told you, we were talking with town council, with public works, with the facilities department. And we had the loss of chairs of both the permanent town building committee and the library trustee board in mid-December. The trustees have not yet met to replace their trustee chair. And just today, I spoke with town council again. So we have every intention of continuing a conversation with you, but you are not correct when you think that the deed and the covenant and the restricted language applies to the front part of the driveway. In 1987, we bought additional land at town meeting that had been owned by Roy Smith and the covenant only applies to that rear portion of the lot. So there's absolutely a discussion to be had, but the deed with the restricted language and the pine tree planting is the rear part of the lot.
The covenant is a little vague on where exactly in the library is covered. I could not find a map of the, what exact lots are covered myself. I would need more records, but when you say that this is still open communications, yet you come to this meeting with a well-refined proposal saying that the covenant is solved and addressed, it really doesn't make it sound like you're trying to get any opinion from me. It looks like you're just trying to say, here's what it is, we don't want anything, we don't need anything.
We appreciate you considering the conversation between the board and directed back. Mr. Moore said, have we had any conversation with town council about this covenant?
So we've had, most of the conversations, I believe, have been directly with the library department on behalf of the board of trustees. We did have a brief conversation today with town council. We know they have reviewed the information. The plan is consistent with Ellen's recollection. What I would say, there's a couple of things. So right now, any of the buffer that's being proposed, I think is well within your site plan review standards in your jurisdiction. I would not recommend to this board that you approve landscaping that is inconsistent with the requirements of that restriction at this time. However, since it does seem that there is going to be future conversations about this, I think leave open the possibility that should the parties mutually agree to a different landscape method, to have a very simple process to come back to this board at a public meeting to simply revise it, something according to what they all agree to. But absent that.
Which is unfortunate that that hasn't happened.
I understand, but.
In three months.
But I think it is.
Tried our best.
It is well within your right to approve for the here and now, a landscape buffer consistent with the restriction and allow for the possibility to have it amended.
I guess to that, Jeff, I would be asking, what is the restriction? We have two different opinions right now.
I can provide a man, I have one right here.
I guess I'd like to get town council's input on that.
Here is lot L that was purchased and this is from this bound to this bound. That's where the buffer restriction language applies. Not along the driveway. Only along this lot L that was bought in 1987. And then you can see behind us, the land under the care and custody of the select board. And I can also send to this board the opinion of town council.
See, my contention would be, as landscaped currently, the only stretch of border that seems to satisfy the covenant is the first half closest. There doesn't seem to be any white pine and there seems like a very deliberate 10-foot buffer all along that front half. And if you think about the, what the sphere of the covenant is protecting, that driveway didn't exist without a parking lot for or to serve. So it really seems like, you know.
I'm so sorry, but I was there, I negotiated the land purchase with Roy Smith. So the pines, which predate my 52 years at the library, have been there a long time, but the buffer was distinct to one lot that was bought in 1987.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Anything else, sir?
Well, just the environmental impact on my land of their driveway being literally right next to it, within that five-foot buffer that is well documented by the arborist report, do have damaged their own trees. I would like that very clearly noted in the record.
Certainly, sir. And I would suggest to you that part of this long engineering process to make sure that stormwater and any contaminated water does not get over to your property. And if it does, you see, there's going to be remedies for that.
And I, I mean, I don't know if this is the right form or what the form is, but there seems like a very clearly documented hazard to my house and property from those dead treetops and branches that has not been addressed for months. It's winter now, that doesn't seem right to me. Is there another form I should be taking that to?
Yeah, I would talk to the Department of Public Works and talk to the tree warden.
Tree warden, do you have like contact information I could reach out to?
Actually, if you provide your contact, I'll make sure that someone reaches out to you.
I can talk to the tree warden.
I'd prefer to do it.
I think the tree wardens.
I don't want to belabor this part in the meeting. If you just want to provide your contact, I would like that. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else in the audience? All right, seeing no other questions, I guess we have a decision to make. Bob, you raised some snow questions, there's some other questions that are about landscaping. Do we want to close the public hearing and rely on Mrs. Starrett to ensure that those questions are answered?
I would like an opinion from town council on this covenant before I make that decision.
I can give you that.
No, that's, I mean, we can make decisions on landscaping, but we've got a real disagreement here between the library trustees and the abutter. And I think, in fairness to that abutter, we have got to get a determination by our council as to what that opinion is. I don't want it by laypeople, I want it by council.
Mr. Moore said, do you have a thought?
What is this?
That's town council's opinion.
So I have a couple of thoughts that have come up tonight. So one, there was a question of wastewater. So I did have a direct conversation with water superintendent Mark Warren today. He is in the process of reviewing what he believes to be the final application. It'll be submitted to DEP. He explained that the net increase of design flow for the wastewater is less than 300 gallons per day. It's really quite minimal. He doesn't anticipate issues, but you cannot guarantee anything in the permitting process. But that is something that must be addressed with DEP. And if there are issues, that's something that they have to react and respond to. It's really not a planning board issue per se. There are a couple of other things that have come up tonight. So first of all, it's not uncommon for this board to, if you were to issue an approval, to have a condition that requires the applicant to provide a final revised set of plans that addresses the outstanding comments and usually is technically related and usually to the satisfaction of the engineering department. Because one of the common, like the biggest technical concern tonight relates to potential conflicts between landscaping elements and subsurface utilities. So that is something that if engineering department has provided a final set of plans that's stamped and addresses their comments, that would satisfy that particular concern. So with respect to the covenant, regardless of, I would say, where the trees are or not, what people suspect, the restriction, it applies to a certain parcel of land, that's it. The restriction is finite, it's limited, it is whatever it is. And I trust that council has reviewed that.
Yes, and the trustees.
Please don't interrupt.
So that council has reviewed that, but if you would like further clarification, it could always be another special condition where, subject to SAS factor review by town council, confirming that the limitation as shown on the final plans is consistent with that restriction. And if it isn't, they would have to come back to this board. Just as if an impasse is reached, say, engineering and the applicant's team has a disagreement about what the conflicts are between landscape elements and the subsurface utilities, they again would have to come back to this board. And there's one other thought I don't want to forget. This current proposal, it does. to forget. This current proposal, it does propose an overflow through unusual circumstances onto land under care and custody of the select board. While you can't require that they secure an easement, you can require that they pursue an easement. Obviously, it requires third-party approval, town meeting perhaps, and/or select board. So, they would be obligated to seek those permissions. And if they're unable to secure that, then they again would have to come back to this board and make the necessary changes in order to address those underlying concerns.
My thoughts are typically to not continue meetings, especially as taxpayers are paying for these consultants to, to come back to these meetings, costing us all money. But, I'll go back to the board. And Bob, your thoughts on what we should do here?
I'm willing to listen to others, but I still think we need some more inputs. I'd like to hear what happens with conservation. I think that could affect some of our conditions. And we might want, I mean, if we close the hearing, we can't take additional information.
So, if you close the hearing, you're correct, you cannot take additional information for this process. That doesn't mean that you can't take future information for an amendment request, or if they come back to this board and make changes.
Yeah. So, if it changes, we could amend.
Right. So-
Joni?
So, my big concern was originally with Engineering. And knowing that Engineering, there's been a good working relationship. I feel much better about that. However, with that said, seeing all these other things that have come up tonight, I, I am a little concerned, especially with this whole covenant thing has been such a big issue from the beginning. And I'm really, I, I'm just surprised it hasn't really been nailed down and addressed. And, and even as, even though we have that opinion, I, I mean, it's not like an official on a letterhead, something we would expect to see. So, I, I'm still a little concerned. And, but I agree. I mean, I don't want to, you know, belabor things and cause, you know, additional taxpayer money. But, some of these are pretty big issues.
One of the things I've been trying, scrambling to find, we were provided a copy of that co-, that covenant, and I can't find it, in one of the various meetings when we had this discussion earlier last year. But, I would like to tie it all together to understand what that covenant is and make sure we kind of understand the bounds of the covenant, which there seems to be a dispute on.
You want a copy of the covenant?
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm trying to-
Good.
Would it be enough to have a condition that town council confirm consistency of the proposed landscaping as it relates to the restriction?
I mean, I, that's going to have to happen anyway.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm fine with that being a condition. I mean, can't, we can't have something that violates the recorded covenant.
Well, wouldn't be understood.
And I would like to get the town council's opinion on Letterhead submitted into the official record.
We can do that.
Yeah.
I spoke with town council today. But, Jeff, wouldn't the opinion come through you?
Well, in this case, it, it went through Ellen on behalf of the Board of Library Trustees. But, this would be your decision, and there's nothing to say that you would require a condition that town council provide to the planning board, an opinion stating that, you know, this must be consistent with that, we'll call it covenant of record or deed restriction, whatever it is. And if it's not, then they must revise the plans accordingly to town council's satisfaction, just like they would have to revise the plans to the satisfaction of Engineering Department to address their technical concerns. So, if your concern is to say that town council must make sure this is consistent with the deed restriction, that can be done through a condition of approval.
Right.
Just like requiring final revised plans to the, you know, satisfaction of Engineering Department.
Okay. I think that's the main sticking point right now. And I, I'm happy with a, I'd be okay with approving the plan, voting to approve the plan with the condition, again, that we have to get a town council sign off that the buffer and the covenant are all consistent.
I tend to agree, seeing four consultants that were paying taxpayer money to be here and come back again.
I don't want to do that.
So, I guess, is there nothing else from the audience or staff? I guess we'll have a motion to close the public hearing. Anybody want to make that motion? Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
With, with, with those conditions.
Absolutely. Right. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
We can go through the list to make sure. I'm sorry, Joni, did you second?
Second with those conditions.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now, the conditions that we want included?
There's a series of conditions suggested by Engineering Department relative to their technical review. We have standard set of conditions for any site plan review decision. But, there are some specifics about having town council confirm that the proposed landscaping within the area subject to the deed restriction is consistent with those requirements. But, separately from that, we want to allow for possibility of future amendments to landscaping within that covenant, you know, should the parties reach an agreement. We would not recommend that this board embrace those changes unless we have something in writing from all the parties involved. We have another suggested condition, that the applicant seeks the necessary permissions for, say, drainage easements that may be required on land required from the select board. And if unable to secure those ultimately, they have to return to the board to resolve that matter. Let's see. And then, just the, provide a final set of revised plans to the satisfaction of the Engineering Department that addresses their technical comments.
Take action on the Arbor's report and contact the tree warden. That would be
I'm not sure that is their condition. That's something you're, we're going to follow up on.
Highly recommend you come and make an agreement with the, the butter.
Is there something else I'm forgetting?
I don't believe so.
No.
Bob, your concerns with snow were satisfied?
Yeah, they're fine.
All right. Having said that, is there a motion to approve PB 2425, 50 Main Street, J.B. Fletcher Library, as amended and discussed this evening with conditions attached?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we're going to jump. Oh, yes, we are going to go. Yes, to, quickly, we're going to skip to general business item PB 2037, 478 Groton Road, request for minor modification to alter the entrance of the property to accommodate a center island curb ready adjustment to protect a new utility pole.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking this out of order. For the record, attorney Melissa Robbins from Farrelan Robbins. We were requesting a minor modification to change the pole location permanently. But, after some discussions with town staff and DPW, we've realized this is not the ideal spot for this pole, even to stay permanently, even with the protections that we had in place with the center island. So, what we're suggesting now is that we are going to move this.
Agreed.
Any of you that have dealt with National Grid can feel our pain, that this may take a little bit amount of time. What we're requesting right now is a six-month temporary pole location for this pole to stay. We'll work with Engineering Staff and Mr. Fox to ensure that there are safety precautions put in place while we have an occupancy for those buildings, one and two. And that's what we're requesting right now, is just a temporary pole location and the location that it should not be in while we work with National Grid to move the pole. I asked Mr. Starett to stay, just so we can answer any questions from an Engineering perspective.
So, did they put a new pole in, in the middle of the road?
Yes. That's a brand-new pole. We actually-
Next to the existing.
We just got power today. It's a taller pole, and we've been begging for power. We did just get electricity today, but obviously, that pole is in the wrong, in the wrong location.
Is that how you designed it, Mr. Waterman?
No.
No.
There's a note on the plan that says pole to be removed, and it's supposed to be right where that tag is to the left-hand side that says proposed curb at existing utility pole. That is actually where the pole should be.
Awesome. Mr. Starett?
We thought it was a joke when we first drove by and saw that they had, had done that, but, you know. So, we did, the, the director of Public Works did have some safety concerns, given that there were going to be, these aren't just contractors coming in and out of this particular property. You're going to have, you know, families and cars and snow and ice, and it just takes one. So, we, the director in particular asked that they stay with the approved plans. But, in consideration of their tenants and their operations on a temporary basis, if well-protected, that it would be satisfactory to have a temporary condition. And then, they can work directly with the director of Public Works to resolve how that safety is going to be installed.
Great. I a hundred percent agree. So, anything from the board, Bob?
No.
Joni?
No.
There?
Engineering's satisfied with it.
Yep, absolutely. All right. So, we, we don't have to modify. Do we? What are we doing, Jeff?
Well, off the top of my head, I believe there's a pesky condition of approval at this point that stands in the way. So, you would, in effect, be authorizing the temporary measure for the pole to remain until they can replace it, and for that to not be an obstacle to issuing a certificate of occupancy for the first building.
That's correct. Right. That's what's, uh, we are, we have buildings one and two that are up right now. We're right now about to go for an occupancy for building one now that we have power. And so, that's what we're requesting, is the temporary modification to allow for the pole in this location for six months.
How long do you think it will take?
Excuse me?
How long do you think it will take?
I'm asking for six months. We'll keep working with National Grid, and if at any point we feel as though we need more time, we would come back to this board. But, we'll diligently work towards that end of getting it moved.
Awesome. So, I think we need a motion to- So, is that correct? The-
Yes.
Okay. Motion to-
That we get approval for the temporary arrangement of the protecting the pole with Engineering and DPW.
authorize, see if I would sign off for building one. Yeah, that. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
See you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Starett.
See ya.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
All right. Moving on to PB 2432, 123 Oak Hill Road.
Your keys, Melissa.
I need that later.
Public hearing, but consider the application for site plan review to allow changes of use from factory warehouse to a dog daycare, including removal of nine parking spaces and installation of a 5,000-square-foot fenced outdoor play area and associated landscaping. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record again, Melissa Robbins from Farrelan Robbins. As you said, we're here tonight for a site plan review for-
You know what? Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
That's okay. We're here tonight for Zippy's-
We need to motion to open the hearing, don't we?
Motion to open the public hearing?
I was wondering.
So moved. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go.
All right, now we go.
Third time's the charm. Here we go. So, we're here tonight for Zippy's Dog Daycare. With me tonight is Matt Waterman from Land Tech Consultants. Jim and Lisa Payne are here. They are the project applicants, as well as Melissa Spalding, Melinda Spalding. Sorry, I'm a Melissa. That is the proposed manager at Zippy's Dog Daycare. As the chair has pointed out, we're here just for a site plan review. Doggy daycare, no, is not allowed use in your zoning chart. This is technically the boarding of animals on property less than five acres. We did have to go to use variance from the zoning board of appeals to allow for the use out here, even though basically everything out here is pre-existing non-conforming. Previous building commissioner determined that a variance was required, and so we went and got one, which was approved by the zoning board of appeals. The daycare will provide for 80 animals total. There'll be absolutely no overnight boarding on-site. So, this is only a daycare. This is a change of use. The structure already exists. It was built in the early 80s. The entire structure was previously used as a business and a factory, which focused on fabrication. But unfortunately, the businesses moved to Devon's, and there's no more fabrication being done there. So, the building itself is vacant. What we're proposing is to just use a portion of the structure, which will be set aside. I think, as you can see it on there, the little tiny print, which is unit A. The total inside square footage will be 6,250 square feet. I'm going to let Matt give you more detail on that in a second while Joe pulls up the detail sheet. And outside, where we're taking out some of the parking area closest to the road, that will be a large play area. It's about 4,850 square feet. We also received a variance from the zoning board of appeals to allow for an eight-foot fence along those property lines, which will help, you know, keep the dogs in and mask any of the sound from the neighbors. For those of you that don't know the pains, they are well-established business owners in the town of Westford already. They're excited to start a new business in the town of Westford. Doggy daycare is a much-needed use in the town of Westford. I don't know if you're familiar with this, or if you use doggy daycares, but the good ones all have waiting lists. They're very hard to get into. So, there is really a demand for this type of use in the town and in the community. Melinda Spalding, as I said, will be the manager of the daycare. She has experience with doggy daycare. She's actually worked at The Rough House, which is the other big doggy daycare in the town of Westford for the last four years, and she's been the acting manager for a little over a year and a half. When putting together this application, I tried not to recreate the wheel. The Rough House has been a very successful business in the town of Westford. In reading just their materials, when I went back and looked at their last modification, they had noted themselves that they had been in operation for almost 14 years and had never had a complaint. So, when I'm looking at projects like that, I try to mimic exactly what their conditions say, so we can be just as successful and good neighbors. Just for a little bit of distinction between us and The Rough House, The Rough House is a little smaller. They have 110 dogs. They also do overnight boarding for 30 animals. They have a butters very closely behind them. They have a butters about 100 feet right behind them. It's Tad McRoe, but I think it's Tad McRoe in Chumpsford that loops behind their structure. But, directly behind there is a, a butters. Our closest a butter is 500 feet away. I think our actual closest a butter is directly across the street on the other side of the commercial building, on the other side of Route 40. It's about 500. But, if you go towards Greystone, you have the road, then Dunkin' Donuts, then Westford Collision, and then the closest Greystone of butter, which is about 500 feet away as well. I won't go too much into labor on this, because I know it's an existing structure with existing parking and existing area, and I'm going to let Matt talk about it. But, I do want to just quickly go through the conditions that the zoning board of appeals have already put in place. I will tell you that when I propose this at the zoning board, and as I read these to you, a lot of these are duplicates right from The Rough House that have been successful. So, the outdoor structure will be in the location for which it's shown on the plan, that we're not moving that. It's been decreased slightly from what we showed in the zoning board, just to be, so the setbacks were in compliance with the zoning bylaw. I know the board had a previous plan with the application where the fence line was a little bit off, and town staff, Sierra was great picking that up. So, we've adjusted that properly, which we lost a little over 100 square feet in doggy outside play area, so 4850 now. There shall be staff on the premises whenever dogs are on the premises. I think that goes without saying, and we don't have any overnight boarding, which makes that condition a lot easier. The walking of dogs shall only occur on the property. Again, we're not looking to walk dogs off property. There's plenty of area inside and outside for these dogs to be on the daycare. This particular facility will be limited to 80 dogs, which is plenty of area for that. There should be a minimum of one staff person with experience in dog handling. I think that's probably missing some words there. Should say at all times while there's dogs on the premises, which we can add to the planning board condition if we'd like. The establishment should maintain a ratio of one staff member to a minimum of 20 dogs. This is actually right from The Rough House modification that they got in 2023. That's the exact same requirement they have as well. Our hours are a little different, because we have no overnight boarding. So, ours are 6:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday. We offered that up. We think those are reasonable times. And knowing that we had a butter come to the zoning board meeting that was really worried with warning dog barking, as I'm sure you are, if your neighbors let their dogs out early, we've agreed to not let dogs out Monday through Friday before 7:00 a.m. So, that first hour, they'll be kept indoors, and 8:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday, just to continue to be good neighbors out there. As I've stated, there'll be no overnight boarding. A little bit different is that we are not going to keep any waste whatsoever on-site. The waste will be cleaned up immediately, and then there's actually services now that come remove all dog waste from the site every day, which is, makes our life a lot easier, and we don't have to worry about storage of any of these materials on-site whatsoever. The fence surrounding the outdoor enclosure shall be such material as to act as a visual buffer for our butters and minimize, minimize barking, and that every year will agree to a certificate- and that every year we'll agree to a certificate of inspection from your building department to make sure we're in conformance with these sections. So those are all of the conditions of approval. Again, this is an existing site, so we're not really changing a lot. What we are going to change, I'm just gonna turn over to Matt to go through briefly, just to give the board an idea.
Yep, now if we go back to the site plan. I'm sure some or most of you have abandoned to the extension of Oak Hill Road, extension beyond where the gas station is and the Dunkin' Donuts. Packard Machinery sits on the corner with Groton Road at the intersection and Laser Services is the building that was behind them. There's two entrances along Oak Hill Road. We're gonna be blocking off the first one. And then on this plan here, you can see that there was nine parking spaces and a loading dock that gets removed, with the majority of the parking being behind the building further north away from Oak Hill Road, or away from Groton Road. So what we do is we remove that parking area. It's about 6,000 square feet of pavement. So we are reducing the amount of impervious onsite and then we're putting in a synthetic turf with a drainage system underneath for the outdoor kennel. The building itself, Melissa quickly touched on it, unit A is on the left-hand side as we're looking. That's the doggy daycare. The building itself is just about 10,000, just over, the footprint is just over 10,000 square feet. Unit A, we take up about 6,250. That's about 5,600 on the first floor and then a small lunchroom on the second floor, just about 600 square feet. Building B, or unit B is on the right. That stays the same and is intended to whatever any of the allowed uses in this district.
What is there now? Is there anything there now?
There's nothing. From a parking standpoint, there's currently 40 spaces. We removed nine spaces, so there's 31 remaining. We're allocating 11 for our side of the building. There's expected to be about five people or employees onsite at any time. And so that would leave about six spaces active for drop-off for the dogs. And then that leaves 20 spaces for the unit B, which is currently what they are allocated for right now, is half of the parking. The drop-off, and I don't know if Melissa got into it, but I mean, the majority of the parking is just dropping off your dog and picking it up. There's no one staying there. There's no other uses or shopping or anything that you'd be doing there. And so the six or seven parking spaces that are available for this use. The indoor, basically the indoor spaces, majority of it's kennel on the indoor. So there's the kennel on the outside, but then there's an indoor kennel in unit A. It makes up about 65% of the floor plan and then 35 is dedicated to office, grooming, storage, and things like that. We did have floor plans. They weren't a hundred percent clear, but the majority of it gets remodeled into like indoor kennel into three areas. Small dogs, medium dogs, and large dogs. Landscaping, the majority of landscaping focuses around the perimeter of the outdoor kennel. There's the indoor architectural plan with the kennel on the right-hand side where the mouse is currently and then the indoor, what we call play area, what was called play area is the indoor kennel. And then the front of the building is just a reception and office and storage. Landscaping is focused on surrounding and buffering the outdoor kennel with an eight-foot fence, stockade fence, and then evergreen plantings around the outside, along the a butter to Packard Machinery and then the a butter, or the Oak Hill Road along the right-of-way, additional plantings there. Melissa talked about waste removal, its daily cleaning. Where we are in a zone two, they have committed to using all organic sanitizers for the AstroTurf in particular, so there won't be any chemicals. It'll all be organic. We did provide cut sheets of that to this Board of Appeals. It's WYSI Wash, W-Y-S-I-W-A-S-H. But we are committed to using just organic sanitizers for maintenance. There's no work within 100 feet of the wetlands. And then lastly, we do remove just about 6,000 square feet of impervious.
And just to talk quickly about the daily operations, I mean, this is a drop-off, pick-up, mostly live parking situation, so there isn't really parking and you stay at the site. The Rough House has about 13 spaces allocated over to the, lack of a better direction, I know this will kill Jeff, to the right-hand side of the building at The Rough House. As I stated in their application, when they just went for modification for more dogs, they've never had a problem over there. There is no ITE use manual line for doggy daycare, so we figured we would use what had worked for other areas. Obviously, if we need more parking area, there's more parking area out here. The rest of unit B is more of a warehouse factory setup, so we don't even think they're going to use the 20 spaces, but we don't think we're going to need them in any case, just given the nature of our use. Just quickly about the butters as well, we think this is a perfect location for this type of use. We're really in an industrial area. Our closest a butters are a gas station with the Dunkin' Donuts and then the other a butter further up Oak Hill Road is a contractor yard, which also can be considered a louder use and also got a use variance for their eight-foot fence for sound control. So we're not concerned to sound to those neighbors. We did go knock on doors. Our immediate neighbors had no concerns whatsoever. I think that we've answered all the questions, but we're happy to answer any questions the planning board may have.
Great. Mike, just quickly, being a client of The Rough House, do I have to recuse myself?
I don't think so.
We have an employee of The Rough House here too, so yeah, it's fine.
I would like you to opine on the parking.
Yeah, I mean, literally you park for 30 seconds. If the dog runs into the place and...
I mean, I just think about, you know, how the difficulty we had with the kid daycare, right? Same thing, right? Really, no. You would take 80 dogs and 11 car spaces, it's gonna be a lot. And I'm sure it'll all come at the same time.
They don't. That's, I think, and I think that's the difference between a regular daycare and doggy daycare is that they're staggered times. People, some people are earlier commuters, later commuters, so you come at different times during the day and there's no really conversation there needed, like a child hand over here, Skippy, and you hand the leash and it's done once you're signed up and enrolled.
I wonder if there's anything that we should consider that, so the other side does get rented, do we have to physically mark parking spaces for them?
They'd have to come to you anyway.
Yeah.
So if they, yeah, there's not enough parking spaces for the uses. They couldn't come to, they couldn't go in.
My point is though that if they get, you know, they have 20 parking spaces. Well, how many are you said now that you're allocating to them?
20.
Right. 20 to them now?
We're going to give them 20. We're keeping 13? 11. 11, sorry, math is hard. 11, 11 spaces for our use and then 20 for theirs. Because we're removing nine where our outdoor play area is going.
So what was the last use in that other?
A factory and warehousing. It was that fabrication use.
So if a future use comes in there, it's the same use as what was last in there, that might not be considered change in use and they might not have to come to this board, which is fine. Just making you aware, it doesn't necessarily mean they have to come back here if it's the same type use that was last in there.
Zoom in on that rate.
But they wouldn't need the parking, just to that point. If it wasn't fabricating.
It's the same use.
If it's a warehouse and fabrication, they're not, they're gonna have four employees and most of their area is gonna be storage anyway, so.
So when this building was built, it was first built in 1983 and then they came back and built the second half of the building as in 1989. And so these parking calculations were from the site plan that the planning board approved in 1989 for laser services, which is, it's like it was a machine shop, but a higher-end machine shop with laser precision, just like the name sounds.
Right.
Were the two units rented separately?
No, no, it was one laser services occupied the whole building.
Right.
Okay, because that's getting to one of my concerns here is, first off, pages 153 and 154 in our packets, it would be helpful when you put in plans that are rotated from the rest of the plans. There's a directional error, so I could kind of align these. Because these two floor layouts are 180 degrees flipped.
I think I know what you're, I know what you're...
And there's no marking on them as to which way is north, so. That's not good practice, but looking at what is unit A on the left, I believe.
Correct.
Which is vacant, there appears to now be only one means of egress in and out of that space as indicated on the plans.
Yeah.
Am I mistaken?
Well, there'll be the main entrance, which is, you can see behind the accessible parking.
I'm talking about unit, I'm sorry, unit B.
B.
Unit B, that's the, they're flipped. Unit B.
I don't know. I'd have to...
There's a back door.
There is a back door. Oh, right.
On that side.
It's not shown on, I'm looking on the plans on page 153 of our packet.
Okay.
Which is the FHP drawing.
Yeah, there's an outdoor fire escape on the building.
It's the fire escape door and there's another door right there also that you can, any rest to that side.
Okay. That doesn't show on the FPH plans.
Right. There is absolutely one there and I know that the fire department was given an opportunity to look at this as well.
That's, I just wanna make sure we're leaving a space that is safe.
Yes.
And the building commissioner would, you know...
Because of the site plan review, yeah.
Yeah.
Would review that, even just in terms of tenant fit-up. They would review that application and make sure it's up to code.
That's correct.
That was, I was looking at that, not for looking at unit B, but for looking at unit A.
Right.
And trying to determine if there was a door between the main interior of the building and the play area. This plan does not indicate such a door. It just indicates there are two 10-foot wide gates.
But there is gonna be, yes, and on the floor plan, I think they show the access from unit A to directly to the outdoor play area.
Yeah. So that was confusing on the plan, so that's my concern.
Right.
Just to keep the dogs contained. I don't want them going through the parking lot to get into the enclosure.
We'll clarify that for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, the construction drawings, to Jeff's point, will have to show all the access and egress. These are floor plans to show you the general layout, but when we go to the new building commissioner for actual building permits to retrofit, we'll have to make sure that all access and egress is up to code.
So that was really my only concerns was had to do with those areas and the means of egress and the fact that there's no directional errors on those plans, so you couldn't correlate all the plans together.
Tony?
I'm good, otherwise.
My only concern was the parking, the whole parking issue, but it sounds like you've got it covered, so I'm fine.
I just have one question on the grooming. Is that like baths and stuff for the dogs? Like if that's the case, how would the drainage work?
The grooming, we've been working with the Board of Health and that was some of their initial comments during the Board of Appeals application, was we'll be required to put in a holding tank for the grooming sink and they have to have, if it's, if it's, if it's using flea and tick color and some of those chemicals, that'll go to the holding tank. If it's just organic shampoos, they can use a secondary bin, but then they'll have to have hair filters so that it won't clog the septic system. So they have a couple of requirements for both conditions, but their main concern was the chemicals, the strong chemicals in flea and tick treatments. And then if it's, I think, kind of standardized shampoos, they were less concerned. So there may, and we haven't done a final layout, but if there's more than one sink, then we'll have one that'll be dedicated to the holding tank, one that'll be dedicated for the septic system. But if there's only one sink, when we go to the final build, it would have to be connected to the holding tank. And that was a requirement of the Board of Health.
And we'll need a Board of Health approval before we can construct any of that as part of our building permit.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Ray has been commenting all along since the beginning of the variance application, and Abby, yeah.
And I think, I think Melissa, you did take care of my one concern earlier today was, I had talked to Joe, was condition five, just adding, that was the staff person with experience in dogging.
Oh, yeah.
And adding the phrase, whenever any dogs are on premises, I'm fine.
I think those words must have just been left off the decision, but I think it goes without saying that there should be somebody qualified in dealing with dogs on the premises at all times, if there's dogs on the premises.
Yeah, you could merge two and five into one really, but...
Yes. Yeah, we can make that clear in the site plan review decision as well.
Okay, go to the audience. Anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns, comments? Staff, anything else?
The guy who asks is if you would like engineers do their customary review before you close the hearing, just to get...
I think I'm in favor of closing the hearing and having a draft decision. What are you in favor for that?
Yes.
All right.
Did engineering review this yet?
As I mean, they typically will wait to hear if you have any, you know, particular comments. So if you wanted their typical review before you closed and made a decision or...
Or it could be a condition of approval.
Yeah, if engineering has an issue, yeah, I think, yeah. Alright, have we said that? Is there a motion to close the public hearing for PB 2432123 Oak Hill Road?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to direct staff to draft a decision consistent with the discussion this evening?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Anything else?
Can you just draft a decision approving?
Approving, okay. Draft a decision approving this application.
I'm picky like that, sorry.
And we'll make the changes to the plan to clarify egresses.
Sir Rick?
I have to staff shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have one more.
Okay, we ran along. We have reviewed that draft decision for PB 2427, definitive subdivision, definitive subdivision, special permit, flexible development modification, 115 DPO. We've had, we've hearing on this, we've approved it, we've got a draft decision. Bob, any questions, concerns on the draft?
It looked good. Actually, I had one question. I think it would simplify it. I think this was picked, must have inherited this condition from the original flexible development condition. But at the top of page four in the decision, it just says this special permit shall lapse after three years from the grant hereof.
Right.
I don't think we need that.
No.
I mean, the flexible development division has been built. That's just confusing.
So I had a suggestion there. I'd rather say that this special permit modification shall lapse. So in other words, if they exercise it and go through the change, they need the modification, but if they manage to sell it without, you know what I mean, then they can, I think if we put modification, it's clear.
That's better. Okay. Yeah, I just didn't understand what would lapse.
Right. No, that's just, I think, just standard language that got carried over. But I agree, there's no need for it. We're gonna take care of it immediately, so there will be no lapsing.
So, okay.
Tony?
Yeah, I had that same concern. Also, the provision shall be binding on owner or owners of each of the lots, plural. I don't know if it's supposed to be plural. It should be lot.
It could be lot, yeah.
Yeah, just simple. And then there was a little bit of a disconnect in my mind between item three and the amendment page two, where one is listing the funds to benefit residents aged 55 and over or based on the select board.
Yep.
And then amendment two is actually listing cost of transportation for seniors and if it goes over that, $25,000, the rest goes to affordable housing. So to me, they were, they were a little bit in conflict. I think they need to say the same thing.
And I drafted this document, I drafted this amendment to the restrictive covenant using some language that I think was proposed at the planning board meeting, so I was very specific as to where the money was going, but I think the condition is more general.
Yes.
But it'd be, it would be simple for, to just, if the board wants, we could take the condition from the restrictive covenant and move it over to the planning board decision so that it's clear if that's where you want the money to go, then that could just be, that could be identical.
So you're seeing the $25,000 to transportation and anything over that to affordable housing. But should it be specifically transportation or senior over 55, I think would be...
I thought, I could be mistaken. I thought the overarching concern was to make sure that if there's excess money, it somehow benefits residents in town that are 55 plus.
Right.
And there were specific conversations about whether it should go towards transportation for Cameron that benefits 55 plus, or there was talk about affordable housing trusts, but then it might be, need to be restricted to 55 plus. So, and we could have not gotten it right, but we thought in the end it was the generic benefit 55-plus residents in town and however the select board was amenable to, if this even comes into being,
Right.
that, you know, they can accept it and use it for anything not inconsistent with that, which could mean transportation for Cameron or, you know, trust fund monies to benefit 55 plus.
With the pleasure of the board. I mean, we can make it more general like the condition or we can make it more specific.
So it's just really making sure when we're done tonight, it's what you folks want.
Right.
I would prefer the more general, over 55 plus, or you know, 55, however we wanna put it. But I think, I'm making it real specific just for transportation, I think is, is not a good idea. But I think, I'm making it real specific just for transportation, I think is, is not a good idea.
Sure.
Provide that, my opinion. And then...
So you guys are amenable with that change?
I'm fine.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. And then I said two other things. On the signature page, the date is twenty-four instead of twenty-five.
Right.
And if I, we have to just change the vice chart here.
All right. Nope, good. I'm good as well. So we'll make those changes and sign off on it.
Yeah, the only, the only other thing is that town council is still weeding through my document here, so just subject to the review and approval and minor changes that town council may make.
Can we just get a motion to that? That would be great.
All right, motion to, is, can I have a motion to approve the decision and the agreement as amended this evening, subject to potential changes by town council?
Who's already reviewing it, so.
Currently reviewing it.
So moved.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving along, we have last item under general business, request planning board to allocate twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars from the Summer Village Gift Fund towards planning studies, specifically a market study for twelve North Main Street.
I will look to be brief back for the F Y twenty-four round. We, one stop, we received a housing choice grant to conduct two studies, a wastewater analysis and a market study analysis for twelve North Main. That was a total of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Last month, the manager was authorized to enter into a contract for the wastewater analysis with Lombardo Associates, approximately a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Now we've just conducted the R F P for the market study, absolute and selected for this upcoming select board agenda. However, to fill the gap between the one twenty-nine, one thirty-one for the wastewater, plus the A four for the potential consultant or K G associates for the market study, we're asking that you provide a recommendation for the Summer Village Gift Funds in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars to be utilized from the approximately a hundred and nine thousand dollars available from the gift fund.
It was a hundred and ninety?
There's a hundred and nine thousand dollars available in the gift fund. We're asking to use, you know, the twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-one to supplement this for the study. And we have to, both studies would have to be done by June thirtieth, so it's a pretty quick turnaround for both of these analyses to be done. So we have a lot of information for, you know, future decision, what happens with the product.
Yep. Thoughts, Bob?
Um, nothing.
Joni?
I'm fine with it.
Aaron?
It makes sense. Yep.
I'm in favor. So you want a motion, Mr. Morris?
Yes, please.
Can I make a motion to recommend to the select board that they allocate twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars from the Summer Village Gift Fund towards planning studies, specifically market value study, the market study for twelve North Main Street?
So moved.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I don't think I saw anything else. Are we, are there minutes?
Minutes, no. Minutes, yes.
Oh, what is this? I didn't see this.
Yeah, it's been over a second. Minutes.
All right, so we do have minutes to review. We get a motion to approve the minutes from December second, two thousand twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Anybody have any?
No comments.
No comments.
Oh, I did read these. I don't have any comment.
Bob?
No, I'm good.
All the favor of approval, say aye. Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right. And then can I get a, oh, we do have correspondence.
Yes, a couple items. There is ongoing public facility study going on, so there's gonna be a few unique conversations. Information on when those dates and those public meetings will be over at the millennium, and that'll be a presentation at town meeting, kind of going with the findings of what that study is reaching conclusion about for what our facility needs are. So it's just to get some information out there if anybody wants to participate in those conversations.
All right, terrific.